Regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council to order Tuesday, September 6, 2016. Thanks everyone. We have a nice big crowd tonight. Thank you all for coming. Madam Clerk, can you begin?
Councilmember Shield.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner is absent. And Mayor...
It's not just me. Mayor. Here. Thank you. As we see, we chatted too much before we started the meeting.
Forgot.
No Brown Act violation there. Next up, I'd like to let everybody know if you'd like to speak on something that's not on our agenda tonight. There are forms on the back table. Fill those out now and turn them in to the city clerk. Now would be a good time, and you can speak to us about anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Just keep in mind, we cannot come to a consensus or make any decision on anything that's not on our agenda, but we will listen to you. So fill them out, get them in now. Be a good time. Next up, item two, we've got the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask for Jeff Warren to lead us in the pledge tonight. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. I just thought you were going to commit an award tonight. Tonight, if I'm correct, with moving on to the agenda, we have an urgency item this evening.
Yes.
Which is, we're going to be looking at adding Application 2016-025, which is for the homecoming parade. We're going to look to add that in as item F on our consent agenda. And we would need to take a vote on that, and what would be acceptable. Aye.
Well, I'll make a motion to add that to the consent agenda under item F.
Second. Actually, we need to, first, we need to find that in fact Phil's criteria for an urgency item.
Which was during, because of the timeframe of when the application came in.
Correct. The date of the event is September 16th, which will be prior to our next meeting. With that being said, I would find that it qualifies.
The other aspect is when it came to the city's attention that this application needed to be. Did it come to the attention after the deadline imposed in the regular agenda?
And it did, in fact, because we just literally received the application today. So it also came after the required application time.
And I think the findings have been made on the record.
Okay. And do we need to take an actual vote on that then?
Yes, we do. It could be a two-thirds majority.
Okay. And we had a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We're good. So we will add the Application 2016-025 for the homecoming parade as item F on our agenda as an urgency item. Other than that, do I have a motion this evening to accept the agenda as amended?
So...
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We're good. We have an agenda tonight. Next up, we have a consent agenda, which is ordinances, wave reading except by title. We have item number B this evening, which is approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 16, 2016. We have item C, which is Application 2016-023, which is the annual sponsoring survivorship Fund Walk Run to take place on October 1, 2016. We have item number D, which is reject a claim 2006-002 filed by Vicky Jeffers. Is that correct? Okay. As recommended by Rema. And we have item E, which is reject a claim 2016-03, 003 filed by Greg Fayer, as recommended by Rema. And then we have item F, which is application that we added 2016-025 for the homecoming parade to take place on?
September 16.
September 16. Do I have any of these items that any of the council members would like to pull for discussion? No? Are there any members in the public that would like to speak on any of these items, A through F, that we've got on our consent agenda? We will handle these in one wave without any discussion. See no one coming forward. I will bring it back to council for a motion, possible motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
As amended.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? And any opposed? We are done with our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizen input tonight? Nathan Maxman? Did I get that right?
You did.
Okay.
So, I just want to say thank you to the city for their response to the fire with the Senator Kipson, specifically Stacy and Margaret for their help with the shelter. So, that's it. Thank you.
And yours as well.
Yeah, you're right there with us, so we appreciate your help as well.
And actually, now that everyone's here, it's a good time. I was going to put that in the comments at the end of the night, but by then, half the room will be gone. I really wanted to comment, sadly enough, I was out of town being leisurely, but I know that councilmembers Matina and Shield and our city manager, Margaret, were very active with that event on Bevins, and I really wanted to comment on their commitment to that and how much was done, so we really appreciate that. Next up, we have a lot of presentations, our public presentations. We have a lot of presentations for the National Night Out. We have certificates of appreciation for all the sponsors that helped us on probably our best 2016 National Night Out walk party that was on August 2. And tonight, the chief is going to help me with that. We're going to read off a lot of names, and if we can have everybody come up that's here and accept their award. And then we'd like everyone to kind of stay up here, and maybe we could get one big group picture, if that's possible. Chief, are you ready to do this?
Yeah, and I, just before we start, I just want to say that, echo the mayor's comments, that we really appreciate the support we had from the community, various different public agencies, organizations, and private businesses that either donated supplies or time and resource or other types of labor to us to pull this thing off. This was our, I think, our most successful National Night Out that we've ever done. We had over 200 citizens in attendance, so it was outstanding, and the main point I wanted to make is that we could not have done this without the assistance of the other agencies, community organizations, and private businesses that donated to that effort, so we really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Let's tackle these. We know. It's actually, it's wonderful when you end up with writing scramps, because you have so many great people helping an effort like that. Chief, these are in no great order, but this is County Fair?
Lake County Fair. Do we have anyone here from the fair?
Lawrence.
They're busy.
4H?
4H. Do we have a rep from the 4H here tonight?
Next up, we have KXBX.
KXBX 98.3. Do we have anyone here from there tonight? I know we've got folks here.
I know. Don't start snickering at us. We have Main Street Bikes.
Main Street Bikes. Anyone? Don't see them.
Grocery Outlet?
Grocery Outlet. Lakeport Grocery Outlet. See the Hanson's here? And I'll just add that the Hanson's have been a great supporter of this event since we started it, every year donating food and supplies. So there's your, let's turn it this way here. There's your certificate. Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks. See if we can have enough room here for everybody.
I'll scoot over next to you.
Yeah. So, we're going to continue calling people.
Okay. We'll do...
No, stay here if you please.
Yeah. Lake County News?
Lake County News. Anyone? All right.
I'll run the camera Elizabeth, if you'd like me to.
What's that?
It'd be really good filming.
Yeah.
It's, the camera's going, so it's...
Kiwanis?
Lakeport Kiwanis.
We have Philip the Clown?
Philip the Clown. Is he here? I don't see Philip.
It's late for one of the gentlemen in the front here to stand up there. We've got Lakeport Fire District.
Lakeport Fire District.
Chief?
Sorry.
Clear Lake CHP?
Clear Lake CHP.
Oh, yeah.
Find a spot here somewhere.
Mass, quite a crowd up here. We have the Scout Pack 142.
Cub Scouts 142.
Hold up, guys.
How you doing? How you doing?
How you doing? Thank you. Thank you.
Guys, find a spot here somewhere.
Yep. We had face painting by Kathy, which was...
Kathy Spur, face painting by Kathy.
She was there until dark. She wanted to make sure every child got their face painted, that one of them.
She did not stop. Everybody was wrapping up, and she was still there painting faces. Very popular. NutriBlends?
NutriBlends. Anyone? Don't see anyone there.
Park Place?
Park Place. Anyone?
St. Mary's?
St. Mary's. Catholic parish. Anyone?
You know Jeff's here, and we're in big trouble.
Jeff Morinart.
Woo! Big one. Pack and Mail?
Pack and Mail. Anyone here?
Lakeport Cinemas?
Lakeport Cinemas. Don't see that.
And lastly, we have Serf Row.
Serf Row of Lake and Menasino County. Can you get everybody in? Rebecca's in.
It's already good.
Yeah. Can you get everybody in?
Yeah, I got everyone.
Cool. Thank you, everyone. Wait, 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 wait.
Hey. Sorry, sorry.
Good? Thank you, everyone.
Jeff? Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to thank the PDs. They're really the ones that spent a lot of time to be playing golf together.
Yes, definitely.
Appreciate them.
Thank you all again. That was a wonderful, wonderful event.
You know, it was big this time, too. We had to skip it last year because of the fire, and we had two years of rain, not even after a reschedule of one. And, but thanks for everyone for sticking with us, because there's a lot of folks here that came to every single one, and we really appreciate that.
Yeah. It's a good event. Hopefully, we can get some individual neighborhoods next year to take it on themselves, and we can have several block parties in the city of Lakeport. It'd be very nice. Next up, we have another presentation, which would be for the annual city fireworks display, presentation of certificates of appreciation to the grounds, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and the Lakeport Main Street Association for their generous fundraising campaigns to support the annual Lakeport Fourth of July fireworks. And Margaret's issues.
Okay. Do you have to...
I do. I'm sure if we...
You're well-practiced now.
I know. Is there anyone, anyone here from Lakeport Main Street?
Bruno's is here, yeah.
There we go. Come on out.
Or Lisa, manager of Bruno's, is also here. Shop for us.
Bruno's has been doing this for years and years, to doing the added dollar campaign.
How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Let me get some more pictures here.
All right. Any more pictures?
There we go. It's just like... It does. It looks... He's so modest. Okay? Okay. Next up, we have the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And then we have the Bruno Shop Smart. Thank you very much. Give you that, and get a picture of you guys here. I'm going to jump in between you.
Throw that far.
I know.
Good? Good?
All right. Think again.
Thank you.
And you know why the mayor's coming up here? I was part of a local shopping campaign for many years with the Chamber of Commerce, where we were trying to get people to shop, stay and play in Lake County. And one of the studies we came across years ago was called the Andersonville Study, that was done in the suburbs of Chicago. And they found out that local businesses like Bruno's and businesses like the Grocery Outlet and people like that that are vested in the community, when you shop at local markets and local pizza parlors and local restaurants, that you get six to 10 times more return than you do by going to other places like corporate box stores. And this is a perfect example of the people that are willing to give back, because they're a big part of the community, and it's a huge part of economic development downtown. But it also takes the people in the community to realize that they need to support the local businesses for the local businesses to be able to give back. So keep that in mind when you do your shopping, and thanks so much to Bruno's and the Lakeport Grocery Outlet and all the other local businesses in Lakeport that contributed so much. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to echo that, I mean, a lot of people hopefully don't take the fireworks. It's a wonderful tradition in Lakeport, and hopefully they don't take that for granted. It's a huge undertaking financially that we share between several different entities that are, we're lucky that we get these different entities that come forward and help us with this, and, you know, hopefully it will continue long after all. Not up here, so...
I'd say Dead and Berry.
No, no. I was going to go Dead and Berry, but dirt map type thing, but I don't think we'll go there. I think we'll just go with, we're just not up here. Thank you again. That wraps up our Area 5, which was public presentations and citizen input. We're going to move on to items of council business tonight, which is going to start out with item E with the chief. It's an after-action report on the fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Thank you, Mayor. So the council has our after-action report, which was in the package, so I'm not going to go over that line by line, but I just wanted to briefly state that, first of all, regarding the actual fireworks event at the Library Park and the law enforcement operations related to that, I think that the police department did an excellent job with providing public service and safety at that event, and that included the outside agencies from throughout the county that we had there assisting. And a big contributor was just having a lot of cops out there to interact with the public and make sure everything stayed safe. Unfortunately, there was a stabbing in the park during that event, which just by chance happened, it didn't have anything to do with the event itself, other than the fact that the two, the two sides that were involved happened to run into each other there, and that unfortunate incident happened, but we got it wrapped up and got people out of there real quick and kept the park safe. Regarding the overall night outside of the park as well as other public areas, it was probably one of the busiest Fourth of Julias we've seen in many years. We had a lot of folks out in various different areas of the city that were enjoying the Safe and Same fireworks, and then unfortunately, quite a number of people shooting off illegal fireworks as well, which was a huge concern for me because of the fire danger, and if any of those happened to hit roofs or dry yards or dry grass fields, anything like that, we dodged a bullet, I think, by not having that. We actually had one fire that I believe was started with fireworks down, maybe Doug could correct me, down near where the new PD is going to be down by Tanmark. I don't know if you were still on, or when that happened, that was late at night, around midnight, but I believe that one was started with fireworks, and I can't say what kind of a firework, but the big issue was just a lot of folks in some of the public or the private business lots that are open to the public shooting off fireworks, which in most cases is allowed by the property owners. However, one of the main concerns that I saw that I think I'd like to try to find a way to address in future years is the large amount of trash that people were leaving in these lots. I got complaints from numerous businesses, private people, and other organizations regarding amounts of garbage that were just left in the lots once people got done with their fireworks, majority of it being Safe and Same fireworks garbage, some of it on city property as well. So, you know, I don't want to criticize any groups or anything, but I'd like to try to find a way to have the city work with those groups to see if we can keep it a lot cleaner, so that people can enjoy their fireworks, but also respect other people's land and get that garbage cleaned up. I personally was out and I saw just one example down in the Willow Tree with hundreds of people and just piles of fireworks garbage left, some of it on fire, burning, smoldering. So, like I said, I don't necessarily believe it's any one individual or group's fault, but I just think we could find a way to work together and try to keep it a lot more clean and keep that garbage fresh. That's the report from the fireworks, our operations from our perspective this year. Unless the council has any other questions, that's the report.
Okay. Any other?
I'd just like to comment that I'm really glad to see that the chief isn't taking a typical knee-jerk reaction and the fire department saying, "We need to get rid of this because of the potential danger." I mean, there's, most, all of the fires that usually happen are illegal fireworks that are being used illegally, and that's a big problem, but I think you mentioned it when you said that a lot of the stuff there that is leftover is still burning, and so, you know, to get that stuff together and to put it into some kind of container that's safe and sound, I think that if we had some kind of, maybe a public relations campaign about cleaning it up and getting into metal cans, because we have a Safe and Same fireworks display up in my house, and it is really brutal picking up all that stuff, and there's a big, big mess just at our house, so I can only imagine down there. We don't want to dump that on our, on our businesses down there. But I think it's a great time, and it's nice for people to be able to go somewhere, people from out of town, buy fireworks here and come in, Willow Tree and other places like that. So it's great that you're not closing the door on that type of thing, and I think that being proactive for next year is a great way to go. And it's a wonderful occasion where we can celebrate, you know, our Fourth of July in a really spectacular way, and I think that doing away with that would be a big, big mistake. So I'm glad that you have your open mind and looking forward to cleaning that up, and maybe we can get some kind of groups together to go out and do that, and metal containers and so forth, so we can get that cleaned up, so the businesses don't have to deal with it after that. So, kudos.
Thank you for the comment, councilmember. I agree with you 100%. I certainly am not against it, I just kind of wanted to bring it, bring it to the attention of everybody that I think, you know, maybe we can find a way to work together, and because I think it is a huge burden on some of the business owners that get left to have to clean that up, and they really shouldn't, shouldn't have to bear all that problem by themselves.
Well, definitely, yeah. Well, definitely, the corporation that owns Willow Tree, if they continually have to clean that up, then at some point, they're going to say, "No more."
Right.
And then folks won't be able to use the property. And that will happen, and we'll see that continue to happen, and so I think public awareness and outreach, we can, we can get it handled. Excellent.
I was wondering about the cleanup and also all the illegal fireworks. Is there outreach that we can do ahead of time to minimize that?
There is. I think there's more that we can do. I, I did some this year through social media, trying to share some, a lot of links with illegal fireworks and concerns on that, but I think there's more we can do for next year to try to get the word out better, work with different groups to try to get that word out, not just have the police and the city doing all the media campaign on it and try to get other people to buy into it and help us get the word out, because those are a huge concern, those flying fireworks that, you know, we get lucky we don't have a fire, because I personally saw many of those, you know, that were going over dry land, over roofs, all kinds of stuff. So we need to do that, and then just, you know, kind of work with everybody, maybe start a little earlier next year on that campaign than we did this year.
You know, it's interesting, and the bottle rockets and the roman candles and even the mortars, in 1995, when one of my good friends got married in South Carolina, the first business we saw as we're leaving the airport was gas and fireworks. And it was like a truck stop, and that's what the sign said, "Gas and fireworks." It's like, wow. This is the wild west back then. And they sold all this stuff, firecrackers, roman candles, and at a gas station. Like, the potential there is just absolutely amazing.
You can still buy it. A lot of folks travel to other states, buy it, they transfer it back to California, and it's just really hard to control. It's very hard to control.
Councilmember Shield, we had, I grew up down in Santa Rosa initially as a young man, and they had a pharmacy and wine shop down there, too. So, I mean, there's just certain combinations you don't put together. Taxidermy stack shop.
Yeah, the taxidermy and beef parke.
Yeah. Just don't do it. So, actually, Chief, I just wanted to comment between the, I know this year and probably most likely next year and thereon, you know, as long as the economy's doing better and people are loosening up a little bit, you're going to see bigger crowds from the pre-brief, you know, briefing that you do down here to the presence of officers and, like you said, you know, kind of just mixing in with the public and controlling things. You guys do a great job, and I know it was a little tougher this year because our staffing was a little limited and we had bigger numbers, and so I just want to say you did a good job.
Thank you.
And I hope the fireworks do continue for a long, long time. All right. Thank you, Chief. Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to open that to the public. I got all carried away there. Was there any members of the public that would like to speak on the briefing that the chief gave for the Fourth of July?
Good job.
Okay, good job. And we just need to move to file this?
Yeah.
Basically, that's all we're due.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the 2016 Police After Action Report on the Independence Day fireworks operation.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We are filing. Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have item number B, which is under council business, which would be Community Development Director Weed Abatement. Approve the proposed resolution declaring dry weeds, brush, and similar vegetation created, creating a fireplace on vacant large lots throughout the city to constitute a public nuisance, and direct staff to utilize the administrative citation procedures outlined in Chapter 8.30 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to abate said nuisance weeds. Hi, Kevin. How you doing?
Doing good. All right. Evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. If there's, if there's one thing that we've kind of learned, unfortunately, from the past two fire seasons in Lake County, is that urban-built-out areas are by no means immune from, from the dangers of wildland fires. So in an effort to reduce this risk within the city limits, city staff and the fire department staff have met a couple times over the past few weeks to kind of look at our own weed abatement process and some of the issues that we're facing, and they're trying to achieve compliance, and kind of twofold, looking at how we can, how we can address immediately the concerns that exist today in this fire season, but also looking at several possible changes to kind of help reduce risk over the long term as the succeeding fire season. Per the 2004 Annex Agreement, when the city officially became part of the overall Lakeport Fire Protection District, weed abatement activities were transferred from the city to the fire district for compliance. to the fire district for compliance. However, the municipal code didn't keep up with that, and it kind of still puts the authority to do the actual physical weed abatement, declare public nuisances with the hands of the city council. So, the fire district does send out a notice to property owners. They've sent two, generally two notices, one in early May and then another in June, seeking and telling folks that they need to clear vegetation on their lots prior to the first business day following the Fourth of July holiday. But despite these letters, there's just less than 100 lots still within the city that still contain some high weeds, a fire hazard, what would be considered to be fire hazard weeds. So, staff is essentially requesting that the council adopt a resolution consistent with Chapter 8.28 of the Municipal Code declaring the dry vegetation brush and similar fire hazard vegetation to be a public nuisance and to direct staff to pursue compliance for the use of the administrative citation process as outlined in Chapter 8.30. If the council chooses to adopt this resolution, the Community Development Department is prepared to send out 10-day compliance letters to identify property owners within the resolution, and then following the exhaustion of that 10-day, we'll do site visits to see if dry weeds are still present at these sites, and then immediately follow that up with the issuance of an administrative citation, which would start at $100 fine and then progressively up to 200 and 500, depending upon whether or not compliance is reached. I know that both Linda Buckner and Chief Hutchinson are available from the fire district this evening. We've been working closely with them, as I've said, to kind of work out some of these kinks in this process. We know it's late in the fire season, but we still believe there's incredible value in aggressively pursuing compliance, but also just as a general note, we're still continuing to meet to kind of look at other possible ways to address this reoccurring issue that isn't so. If you read through that section 8.28 of the Municipal Code, it's very labor-intensive and upon both the limited staff resources of the city and the fire district. So, we're looking at other, how other jurisdictions handle this, most notably Napa, the city of Napa, has a pretty good ordinance that we think we can look at. There's several other agencies that we're looking at as well. So, this is not just this current fire season, but we're also looking at ways of addressing this reoccurring problem in the future a little better as well. So, that's the end of my report. I'm sure there's any questions that I can't handle, I'm sure the chief can.
There's no questions you can't. Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions from council?
Well, in the situation where you have absentee owners that may be out of state or anything like that, are we going to, I know in some situations, other jurisdictions, they actually go in and do the removal, because the ultimate goal is to remove and get the six inches that are required to remove the fire hazards. So, my concern would be that we get that done one way or the other, and then, you know, pursue the administrative citation, getting the money and the remuneration later, but we need to remove the fire hazards. So, are we, have we got to that point yet, or is that something? Well, that's the problem. If you look at the Municipal Code, Section 8.28, if we followed that procedure on, we likely would not be able to meet all the due process requirements within, it'd be raining by the time we were able to actually physically.
Be irrelevant.
Yeah. We are aware of the problem with absentee property owners, and if there's, you know, some specifically egregious parcels, I think most notably, the one that comes to mind is the one that sits right there between Lakeshore and Lakeport Elementary, I think is a major concern. There's a couple other parcels that are in some pretty vulnerable areas. If we don't get compliance with those in a quick fashion, we can look at, you know, perhaps using some re-abatement action to take a look at those and go through that process as well. So, hopefully, we won't have to do that. And we're also sending out with these notices, some, a flyer from CalFire, talking about how to safely remove those weeds, because we don't want to inadvertently start fires in the process and trying to declare these nuisances in the process.
That's a great flyer.
Yeah, those were, exactly, because we've had, we've had fires, even starting down the way over off of Bill Road, you know, rare lawnmower, metal blade, dry grass.
Correct. To remove the fire, have it decreed the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that came really close to home, one of my retail customers came in and the very cause of him losing his house and everything in it in Lower Lake was because his neighbor had, you know, four to six-foot weeds that were never addressed, and they weren't abated, and they caught fire, and he did everything he could, and he had to get out, and he lost everything. The saddest thing was he came in a couple weeks ago and he showed me his heavily charred class ring from Lower Lake High School, and I was like, man, this is so sad that because somebody else doesn't take care of their property. And it's not really our job to go next door and like mow their lawn for them, but I know that in my case, up on the hill where I live, I do the, sorry about your lawn, but I do the roundup all the way out into my neighbor's yards, all the way around to try and protect my area, because I have a huge unplowed field that hasn't been taken care of in many, many years that used to be taken care of, and I like to try and protect my property, but sometimes it's a little bit presumptuous to think you can just go over there and mow their lawn for them or get rid of their weeds. So, I think that this is a great thing, and I love the administrative citation process because it's quick and it's efficient and it's a lot more, it gets it done long before the rains come and it's too late. I love it.
You weren't apologizing for roundup, were you?
No, for Monsanto.
Okay.
Well, one thing that I would like to add is especially coming off of the senior apartment complex fire, you know, Kevin and I ran just a radius report for a completely different reason on all these properties, and every single one of these properties that has an abatement issue right now, within 500 feet radius of each one of these properties, if you do a circle, you know, radius 500 feet, it encompasses 75% of the city, basically, residential areas. So, meaning that 75% of us has a home within 500 feet of one of these properties that potentially is, could burn and then catch another home on fire, and so it definitely needs to be addressed, and we know what it can do. We've seen it all too well in the past 15 months, 1250 months.
And it's not like it hasn't happened before. I've been told that in the mid-'80s, there was an incident where a wildland fire came in and actually did burn a few residences in the Sixth Street area there on the west side of town where it jumped the highway, and, you know. So, it's certainly a possibility.
Thank you, Kevin. At this point, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public to speak on this, and I wanted to ask Chief Hutchinson, I know we had a discussion back which Margaret's kind of briefed on, would you like to touch on that at this point? It might be, might be appropriate.
Do I have a question?
Oh, that's all right, go ahead.
Can I please come up backwards?
You just didn't jump up quick enough.
Yeah, I was thinking about it, though. When you're looking at redoing the-
I know your name, but you have to give your name.
Kim Beal, B-E-A-L-L. When you're looking at redoing this, I think that trying to have a goal date of before July 1st would be the way to go, because you would let those down before the Fourth of July, not after the Fourth of July, pending the fireworks. And then also, even maybe earlier than that, because at that point, they would be taking the weeds down when they're green rather than when they're dry. So, that would also lower the chances of fire.
Absolutely. That's something we've discussed, you know, typically what you see is ordinances that require the removal of weeds by June 1st, and then also continuing, you know, if you get a late rain, you may need to go in there after June 1st, too.
July is way too late.
Yes, absolutely. Just with the risk alone of what we just talked about with Fourth of July fireworks.
Thank you, Kevin. Before I edge the chief up here, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this?
I would like to, but I'd like to hear what he does to say.
Okay. Maybe I'm incorrect, but it seemed like a good time to tie this in.
Yeah, that's fine. You can mind me, too.
Just for the recording. So, Chief Hutchinson, Lakeport Fire Protection District, one of the things that Mayor Stilman and I discussed was that many years ago, it was common practice for the volunteers, particularly on training nights and stuff, to go out and do train burns on a lot of the larger vacant lots within the city's limits. I'm not sure at what point the city code changed and stuff like that, but as it's written now, we're only allowed to do train burns specifically if it's a structure, and that is something, you know, granted, we have very strict guidelines that we have to follow, and we do prescribed fire and such, there's obviously benefit to us as far as training our folks with live fire, but it would be something that we'd be willing to entertain again, if the city was willing to entertain it, like I said, in the very strict prescribed fire conditions like CalFire has to use and all other professional agencies have to use, to possibly help with some of these larger lots. It's a pretty quick and efficient and cost-effective way to deal with them. So, but that would take a change in the city code.
Definitely something we can bring back to discuss, because there has to be a policy and how that would be done.
Yeah. Well, you know, there are, there are just some lots out there that the only way to take care of it is going to be weed area, and they're pretty steep and they're just in areas where, you know, probably haven't been cut down.
That's right. And a nice, cool evening, and the breezes are favorable, and the humidity's coming up, and direct tours would be doing a better job.
Chief, do you remember, I don't know if you have any privy to what the original policy was, how they did that? Was it something where the public contacted the city, city director, when they did the burning of the lots?
My understanding was the property owners came to the fire department directly, and we still have, I found in some of the files when I first arrived and was digging through the various archaic things, the agreement between the property owner and volunteer fire department, the no hold, the whole harmless, the liability for these, those types of things, to put that procedure in place. So, we still have a framework for that.
Yeah, we'd just see whether we'd want to-
Bring some samples, whatever, can we just do that?
At least, yeah, we could take a look at that. Yeah, we'll bring that in, and that might be something to entertain, especially for larger, larger lots that are difficult to maintain.
Even if it's just putting in buffers, strip firing rounds and edges, things like that.
I'd be curious to know why we stopped later.
And I don't know, do you know what the timeframe was, when it did end?
I'd have to talk to some of my older staff members, I'm sure they-
Maybe some of the, maybe some of the board members.
For some of them, I, probably a lot of it had to do with the change in the air pollution laws and an unwillingness of people to go up against the air pollution, although even under air pollution code, we're allowed to do those kind of burns, we're still allowed to do structure burns, you just have to, you know, greater stricter criteria than you did in the past. The other issue might have been, I know several years ago, it was imposed in all lands, for instance, outside of the city limits where CalFire has jurisdiction, to do a prescribed fire, we have to do a full seagull process, and so that made it almost cost prohibitive to do it. And that's why you've seen a lot of the old burning that used to be done historically in places like Cattle Mountain, which used to be burned intentionally, not unintentionally, in a controlled. That's why a lot of those types of projects came to a halt, because of those prescriptions that were put on there that just made it, the process too onerous and too expensive.
And raging fire coming through Cattle Mountain is probably the biggest threat to later, directionally.
It's happened before. Way you go on, and actually, I was looking at the fire history map for the county from, at the fair, and they have one that came off of Cattle Mountain in the '50s that the perimeter encompassed the entire city of Lake County.
He's got like a chiller.
Yes, especially with all these lots right now that still need to be cut down.
All right. Anyways, I just thought maybe that was a good tie-in, and maybe we can take a look at that at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
I thought you were going to be done, and you just go, oh.
Nathan Maxman, and my question is on the abatement process. Is it something that can't be done? I know the county made an abatement happen relatively quickly with Holberts. I know it was an environmental thing at that point, but I don't know if that had to do with the disaster or if it can really happen that quickly, but it's just something, I mean, sending people citations isn't necessarily going to get the lots cleared.
Well, the Holberts item, even though it happened quickly, still took months, and months from right now puts us in the rainy season. So, but I mean, if there was, you know, six-foot tall grass next to, you know, I guess a business that potentially could, could spark that, then I think we could, but even some re-abatement, there's due process, and I don't know, probably helps, yeah.
You are correct, the quicker we can do it, the better.
Any other members of the public? Come back up. Or will you make you give your name again? Can't be you.
Can't be you. So, when you plan to rewrite the abatement, if you do do that, will people be able to just set fires in these empty lots? That would be strictly not allowed, prohibited.
That, I think that concept would only be, if we entertained it at a later date, would only be through professionals, through like per fire.
Because with the people up here, that would have to be stated in big, really big letters.
Yeah, they can't, yeah, no, they can't. Any other members of the public that would like to comment? I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, there is no other discussion. I've moved to approve the proposed resolution declaring dry weeds, brush, and similar vegetation creating a fire hazard upon vacant and large lots throughout the city to constitute a public nuisance and direct staff to utilize the administrative citation procedures outlined in Chapter 8.30 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to abate said public nuisance weeds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? I think we have a, well, we're opposed, we are there. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Chief. Last, we have City Council Communications, item number seven. I'm going to start with Doug, who's been quiet out there in the grandstands.
That's just because he's bored out.
Yeah, probably.
Our main focus stills on the Main Street project, which is moving right along. We've gone into the base where we're now actually talking about paving procedures, and by the end of the month, if everything goes correct, and I don't want to jinx us, we will start the paving process on Main Street. We've also got the Bevan Street paving project getting ready to kick off within two weeks. That will be just prior to the paving on Main Street, so we're gearing up to keep going on that as well. And then following on the heels of that, we'll be starting the Lakeshore ER project, which will be coming, hopefully, to council for a ward on next council meeting. So, we just have a whole lot going on. Just finished up with the fair and between parades and water leaks and everything else, we're just really busy. But it's all good, so.
Well, Doug, I was going to hold it off till the end here when I made my comments, but if you could pass it on to Public Works. I know I walked Main Street the Friday before the Taste of Lake, or Lake County, that they changed to me. I'm not used to the change from Friday to Saturday, and that was the name change, so it's a little around there. Anyways, I did see a lot of the unevenness at the edge of the road, and then the crews came out and filled all those areas, I believe, Saturday morning, not sure how long that took, but I know a couple people barked and complained about the soft stuff being filled out on the road, but if they saw the gaps and the, I don't know what you call that, the unevenness, yeah, of what was there before, I think, you know, an occasional heel that got stuck in the stuff was much better, and I just wanted to say, you know, for anyone that pooh-poohed that, it was a great effort, and I thought, considering the construction and everything, it really looked really nice down there for that event, and I'm glad we kept it up on Main Street. I don't know that we had any issues with any, nothing of that.
Yeah, we haven't heard of any issues, and that was a mutual effort between city staff and Granite, and it took about four hours to get that all done for the event. So, there was a lot of effort put in that to make sure that it was safe and as convenient as possible for those people that were attending. And I have to call Taste of Lakeport probably will forever, and those Taste of Lake County now.
Can we do something about that? Did that change that?
Can we do something about that and if that changed that?
Well, actually, the reason they did that, not to get sidetracked, the reason they changed the name was to attract more wineeries, were complaining that it was a Lakeport thing and they're not from Lakeport, restaurants were complaining the same thing. So they kind of changed it to the Taste of Lake County to kind of bring in and appease more wineries and restaurants that are not in the immediate area, which we need that for the event, otherwise we can't fill the venue with wineries and restaurants. So that was the reason for the change. I know, I see that you're not happy with that answer.
The other, the other big thing that we've got going on coming up really quickly is Splash-In and that takes a lot of Public Works staff. That'll actually be a day of prep and then it's almost a day to take it all back out. So that's coming right around the corner, so. But it's a very good event.
Yeah. And you guys put out the extra effort and I really appreciate how things went down there. I was a little, you know, everybody was a little concerned about the numbers of people down there and the construction and it all came together very quickly. I'm sure that was a coordination of staff and Public Works, so we really appreciate that also.
Thank you. Three more gray hairs.
And when you take my spot on the, the planning part of the Main Street Association, you can help change the name back.
I segue right.
Yeah, yeah, since I won't be on that anymore, there should be a nice little thing for you. Chief?
No reports in that case.
Okay.
Just carrying on with Doug, we're starting to see the light at the end of tunnel of some of these larger projects. We had a very good public outreach meeting last Wednesday night for the lakefront revitalization plan. So some really good feedback was there, we received there from about, we have about close to 50 people in attendance and got to review some possible alternatives and it stirred some really good conversations that I think are going to really benefit the community as a whole. We're going to put those alternatives up for review here very shortly online as a survey aspect. We're going to try and coordinate with the school, maybe getting those survey links distributed out there to the schools as well and doing a social media blast to try and get this out to as many people as possible. We're starting to look at planning commission dates probably in November and then that would be bringing that plan to you guys shortly thereafter. So I'm seeing the downtown project, we're going to be paving Bevins, this lakefront revitalization plan, Carnegie Library, it keeps progressing. So we're starting to see some of these projects all start to come together at the same time. So it's, it's been, it's been a really good process.
There's no effort behind that.
Absolutely not.
Okay, I figured it was just seamless for you, right? Thank you, Kevin. David?
No report.
David, there was a question, just because, you know, we don't usually get a report from you. There was a question running around our office today, which was, what's the least favorite number that you like to write when you're writing something? Mine's seven. I hate writing seven.
My least favorite number?
Yeah, someone else didn't like writing eight.
I don't think this has been a genderized statement.
It's just a question. Yeah, what's your least favorite number to write? I gotta get something out of you.
Maybe, I was having trouble with my sevens.
Really? I hate sevens. You and I both. Okay. Good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just remembering when we went into, tomorrow's a seventh, so we have a problem.
Did you do the little line across the seven? Lots of educated persons. They say units, chosen, I don't know.
No, thank you.
Sorry, do you?
I always thought it was a crazy seven.
No, no, I don't.
Your team.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Boy, yeah, I pulled you in that time, didn't I? Margaret?
I just want to make a comment. What makes Lakeport wonderful is all the events we have and Granite Construction's like, how many events do you guys have? Because they have to worry about the streets all the time during the construction season and everything. It's been kind of funny. They didn't quite say it that way. I mean, it was a little bit more excited than that, but what's, what makes it great. And Granite's been awesome in helping us make sure that things are open, the streets are decent condition for a parade or whatever. And I want to give a great big shout out to Public Works. They have four employees right now, that's including Doug. So, and all these events that come up, that puts so much pressure on Public Works and the police department, who are all so shorthanded. They got a lot of people, but they're all in training. So I want to give a big shout out to staff. It's, it's a lot of overtime, extra work you have to do to get these events going, but you know, it is with the heart of Lakeport that makes it a wonderful community, so thank you.
Kelly Buendia?
I just wanted to mention that we've set a date of October 14th for the Employee Appreciation Lunch and hopefully you guys-
What's that?
The employee appreciation, October 14th.
October 14th.
Yeah. I believe it's Friday.
Right.
Yeah. So we will, we'll have more plans later. Why don't they, why don't they, we're doing a dunk tank or we're definitely not doing the basic.
No softball.
Is that going to be dunk?
No softball.
Um, we may try West Side, West Side Park again, but we'll let you know when those plans firm up, but I want you to calendar the date.
Okay. October 14th.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Turner? Councilwoman Turner? Proton?
Uh, let's see, I attended the lakefront planning meeting, I was thrilled to see the progress. It's so exciting. Every once in a while, someone stops and goes, wait, do we have the money to do any of this? And so we kind of backtrack a little and say, no, but you know, plan it and maybe she'll come. But that's going great. And then I wanted to just say that I met some of the nicest people that lived in that senior housing. Here they were bumped out in the night and we did everything to make them comfortable, put them in cots, there was probably 18 of them for quite a few nights and they did not complain or get angry. It was, they're just, I kind of just fell in love with a group of them. They were so sweet. And Margaret and Martin went out of their way to help them. Martin so much as took a dog home for the night, so one of the gentlemen wouldn't have to worry and he didn't have to kennel them, he was home with Martin's family and he put a hotel room on a credit card. So really great people and Margaret went and got pillows and we did everything we could to make them more comfortable and I think it made a big difference to them. So it was just nice that they all come together.
Eric. Congressman Parlet?
Well, you know, with the Lakeport downtown disaster, or whatever you want to call it, different people saying it's, you know, it's a terrible thing, but having been to the Shakespeare in the Park and then we were down catering at concerts in the park and then we did the Taste of Lake County, we're coming up on the Oktoberfest and the Canokai Challenge and being out on Main Street serving food to 700 plus people and seeing the nice wide sidewalks and people, you know, three and four abreast, before we even got the tree covers in there, it's, and the ladder problems and I've made numerous deliveries to Al over at the tavern and he's busy all the time in spite of all of the trouble. I think the people of Lakeport have been very, very patient, but you know, when you look back at everything that's happened this summer, and Granite has a reason to be upset because of all these activities, but it really makes you proud when you're overlooking the park and, you know, the Shakespeare thing and you're overlooking all these people having a great time at concerts in the park and thanks to all the sponsors and KXBS and stuff. It really makes you proud to have a small town like this where everybody can go out and do all these wonderful things. And some of the stuff's yet to come with the Splash-In and the Oktoberfest and I understand that the paving, you know, could be done by, you know, the Canokai Challenge, which will be great. And I know there's some current concerns and everybody already talked and communicated and that's the beautiful thing about having hardworking, integrated and concerned staff that are really passionate about what they do. So I feel really grateful to be a part of this great team. So congratulations to all you guys and everything that's happening this summer and there's still more to come.
Future supervisory shift? Can I say that?
Probably shouldn't have. I tell you, you were asking David for his least favorite number. You've definitely got his least favorite statement. Well, next week is Area Planning Council and Transit and I think we're going to get some of the feedback. They did a public workshop over at the Moose Lodge and some of the stuff we'd already seen, but we're showing people the, the two suggested plans for the roundabout at Highway 20 and Highway 53. So we should be getting some of that back and be able to report back on that for that. This weekend, Sports Night, Clearlake High School Sports Night will be at the Fair Ground, so if you're not doing anything Saturday evening, come on by and let, let me take some of your money as the auctioneer and to help out the Clearlake High School Athletics. Next week, the Splash-In, going to have a good time with that. And our neighbor over in Telseyville, it's the last Kickin' in the Country on that Thursday 9th to 15th. So if you want to make one, it's the Praetor Brother Band, this guy's been playing since Dirt was created.
Graduation.
Yeah, see, there you go. And it'll be one of the busiest Kickin' in the Country dances too. So that's one thing that's great about Lake County and we just have events all the time. It's a fun place, so beyond that, not too much more until next council meeting.
I know I already said it, but I'd like to compliment Sheil and Matina and our city manager again for their efforts over at Bevins. I know I said it earlier, probably the same people here, but.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt you real quick, Andy, Doug and Public Works guys, I mean, within minutes, they were at, because otherwise it was police and high patrol that were having lockdown Bevins and they were there, Johnny on the spot.
Thank you.
Made it much easier.
And the police were carrying the people out on their shoulders.
Thank you, thank you. Again, I wanted to thank Margaret for the, you came down and helped set up for Taste of Lake County. And I know I saw Andrew written down there, was Hillary there too or just?
Yeah.
Okay, I might have missed her in the crowd, but, and did I miss anyone else at this down there, other than Public Works? I did know it was.
I remember that, I think that's the staff that actually worked the event, but we had lots of Public Works staff that come down.
Anyways, thank you for coming down and helping with that event. Then I saw you down there later and you looked like you were having a good time, just enjoying the event.
It was a great event.
Yeah, it was very nice. The other thing I'd like to mention is it was very nice to go to the graduation of the new officers, Walter and Hoskins. Yes, correct. Got to go there with the chief and several members of staff and it's a whole new appreciation for what the officers go through. It's, you think of it as training, it's more like a boot camp, which I'm sure you can attest to. But that was wonderful and I believe Hoskins, was Hoskins that proposed to his?
That was Walter.
Walter, I'm sorry. I knew I was going to get the two names. Walter that proposed and got accepted for a marriage and I don't know what they set a date and stuff, but it was very nice to see that whole procedure and see all those different officers that went through the training and the, the different awards that were given out today, so.
Thanks, thanks for being there.
Oh, thanks for the invitation. It was wonderful. Very, very nice. Margaret was there and I know Kelly was. Did I miss anybody else?
PD officers.
Yeah, all the PD officers, yeah, yeah, it was very nice. Lastly, I wanted to read, I know that staff and council has got this letter from the city of Clearlake, but I figured lots of times the public doesn't get privy to this. This was assistance during the Clayton fire and this is from the city of Clearlake and it's addressed, Margaret, I just wanted to relay my appreciation as well as my appreciation of our council and our staff and the assistance that you and your staff provided during the Clayton fire. Chief Brad Rathman and the other PD staff who helped evacuate and patrol the avenues were a great help to us, as was Doug Reiter and his staff who helped us maintain a 24-hour barricade. Thankfully, the help was only needed for a few days and the city of Clearlake was fortunate to once again have dodged a major disaster within our city limits. Spirit of cooperation in Lake County is phenomenal. If there's, if ever anything we can do to assist the city of Lakeport, please don't hesitate to ask. Regards, Greg Folsom, city manager. Lots of times, these letters make their way to city council and to staff, but they don't get seen by the public or heard, so I just wanted to read that and with that, I will call the meeting.
Also, one, CAL FIRE.